Go ahead and call the meeting to order this morning and welcome everybody to the November Regular County Council Meeting. Good to have you with us today. We'll start now. Mr. Butler will lead us in prayer.
Please. Lord, we come to you today with grateful hearts for all the many blessings that we receive each day. As we approach this season of Thanksgiving, let us never forget the source of our blessings and may we always give you praise for them. We ask that you continue to watch over all of us and especially the ones who are dedicated to our safety and protection daily. We also ask that you continue to be with the family of our friend and fellow councilman Ralph Watson. Please continue to comfort them as only you can. We ask you to heal our broken world and restore peace throughout the world. And as always, we pray that all that we say and do will be pleasing in your sight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please stand. We pledge allegiance and flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your brother, who sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. We'll move down to the item three, Adoption of the Agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Butler, second by Miller. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. We'll move down to item four A. This is a resolution in honor of Mr. Ralph Watson. We miss him so much and I'm sure everybody else does, but we do miss him. Do I have a motion to pass the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Curtis, second by Compton. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. And at this time, I want to ask Mr. Ruffner if he'll read that resolution.
Yes, sir, my honor, Mr. Chairman. A resolution in memory of Councilman Ralph E. Watson. Whereas Ralph E. Watson was born April fourth, nineteen fifty-four, in Savannah, Georgia, the son of the late Buren Augustus Watson, Jr., and Mildred Far Watson. And whereas Councilman Watson was a graduate of Herschel V. Jenkins High School in Savannah, Georgia, and attended Georgia Tech University. Whereas Councilman Watson was the devoted husband of Karen Atkinson Watson and the proud father of two children, Candace Watson Godfrey and Derek Watson. He was also the proud G-dad to his grandchildren, Isabella Godfrey and Millie Godfrey. Whereas Councilman Watson owned and operated Classic Builders for over twenty-five years and was the former owner of Watson Jewelry and Gifts. Whereas Councilman Watson was elected to Chesterfield County Council in two thousand sixteen and served continuously for five years. He served on the council's Building Committee, Animal Services Committee, Rules and Personnel Committee, Economic Development Committee, and on the Board of the PD Regional Council of Governments. Whereas Councilman Watson's expanded services included serving as the president of Green River Country Club, co-founder and former president of the Chesterfield branch of the Lions Club International. He was a member of the Chesterfield Masonic Lodge, number two twenty, the Omar Shrine Temple, and served as an honorary member of Chesterfield Rescue Squad. Whereas Councilman Watson was a faithful member of Chesterfield Baptist Church, where he served on the security team and was a former member of the Building and Grounds Committee. Whereas Councilman Watson was a devout community leader faithfully serving the citizens of Chesterfield County tirelessly with honor and distinction. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chesterfield County Council wishes to honor the memory of the late Ralph E. Watson and expresses its gratitude for his professional leadership and unwavering dedication of service to the citizens of Chesterfield County. Be it further resolved that the Chesterfield County Council hereby adopts this resolution of appreciation in his honor the second day of November, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph.
Ralph, you know, Ralph knows you love him, y'all love him dearly, and Ralph loved his family, his Lord, and his camp, and he gave him all. Ralph was a hero. He served well here. We're very proud of him. We all. Thirty-something years ago, we had lots of jewelry gifts. Ralph always worked hard with me, and I think I've always ever tasted jewelry that I've got in my life. But he gave me something himself that I cherish more. Thirty-something years ago, he gave me, he gave me his friendship, and I appreciate him so very, very much. And he's going to be very well missed by this council and future councils.
Okay, we'll move down to item five eight, Approval of Last Month's Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Compton, second by Miller. Any discussion?
Make note, the clerk, that I'm not going to vote because I was absent. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Move down to item six, Signing of the Bond. Tim, you got them coming around? We'll move down to item eight, Public Comments. Anyone here wish to address council? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, I didn't get put on the agenda today to speak, so I know you can't take any actions for what I want to propose to county council. Uh, I guess going back to the county of Chesterfield through John Duck's air, through Billy Castings, now through mine, we have been trying to pave the old courthouse parking lot. And working with Sammy, working with PD COG, they can't pave the parking lot, but we can add an additional street through there to, and to go ahead along with Bill or Drive. And to be able to put parking spaces there, I have a drawout through COG. I'd like to leave with y'all. And consideration the part behind the solicitor's office, they're not going to be able to pave. We'll have to come up with the money to be able to pave that. It's going to be cheaper through the architect designs and all that for us to be able to do this project at one time and not come back and try to redo it at a second time for us the money and the cost of doing that. Um, what I'm coming to county council for is to see if y'all would be willing to share the cause since the solicitor's office utilizes a lot of that parking space back there and for us to be able to finally get that parking lot paved and have a street. And I mentioned to Tim on the, going all the way through from Green Street all the way through the courthouse parking lot here, all the way to Mill Street, but that would be something the county council would have to reach out, maybe Sand Hill Telephone, because we'd probably have to have a little bit of their property to make that a street all the way from Green Street all the way over to Mill Street. So like when they're having events and things going on throughout the town, they'll have access way to get through to get around all that, those issues or whatever. I would like to leave this map that Lindsay and Sandy drew up and to consider. I'll be glad to come back at December meeting if you want to put me on the agenda. But I know you can't make any action on this today, but y'all do utilize a lot of that parking spot back there. And I mean, it's an eyesore and we spent, I don't know how much money we had to buy to just put coal patch on it just to get the holes fixed where you were so bad through there. And I know several of the people at the solicitor's office had confronted me about the holes. And so we did pay for our public works people to go in and put coal patch down on those holes there. So I will pass this around and if you would, please consider. I don't have cause yet, but I'm waiting on that to come back with COG and we still have some things to do on our end as well. But if you, if this happens, I just hope you would consider helping us, you know, on the burden, the financial end of that. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Don't see any, so we'll move on to item nine A, Public Hearings, Project Sand Hill Fee and Lew Ordnance. This is a public hearing. Do I have a motion to go into a public hearing? Motion by Miller, second by Rivers. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to address this issue? Don't see anyone. I'll assume the same two will make the motion to close. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Move down to item nine B, Second Master MCP Ordnance Amendment, Project Sand Hill, another public hearing. Do I have a motion, one motion by Curtis, second by Burns? Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. We are, the public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to address this? Don't see anyone. Assume the same two will make the motion and second to close. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Move, move down to item ten A, Project Sand Hill Fee and Lew Ordnance. This is the third reading. Do I have a motion to make at the third reading? Motion by Butler, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. We'll move down to item ten B, Second Master MCP Ordnance Amendment, Project Sand Hill, Third Reading. Do I have a motion? Motion by Burns, second by Compton. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Move down to item ten, Resolution Supporting the South Carolina American Revolution Centennial Commission Resolution. Uh, Ms. Anderson, didn't you head this up?
Yes, sir. This is what I spoke about at last council meeting. So the Sessor Centennial Commission is the two hundred and fiftieth birthday essentially. And in order to get grant money, we have to, the county has to have a commission appointed approved that we're going to be a part of this.
Okay, I'll assume that's your motion.
Yes, sir.
Pass the resolution. I have a second. Second by Butler. Any discussion?
Now, this is just a resolution. Is that right?
Ma'am?
This is just a resolution.
That's correct.
Is that right?
It allows the, it, it allows us to then form a committee. And then once the committee is formed, then they come up with a project that the money will be used for. And there's no money expected from the county. It just allows us to apply for grant money.
Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. We'll move down to item ten D, Resolution of Appreciation from Mr. Robert Mac Nicholson. Mr. Mac was going to come today, but Tim, apparently he didn't feel like it.
Unfortunately, Mac's health is declining. He is unable to do what he wants this morning. But his son Rodney is going to stand in his presentation. Mac sends his, uh, love y'all guys. He said he just, that his health is just not allowing him to get out there.
Okay, let's get it passing and we'll present it to him. Uh, do I have a motion to pass this resolution? Motion by Mr. Rivers, second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Tim, if you'll meet me down in front?
As President of the Chamber, I've had the great pleasure of working with your father for many years. I've had the pleasure of unattended with your father many years. I've been able to work with him. He has the same situations I do. I've learned to love your father. And so I call his attention because anytime I need history or support, your dad has always been there. I mean, he is, I say that I'm working on the revitalization of downtown Pasan. And he told me he's going to pass it off. And he has done it for years and years and years. He has restored the East Seymour Building, and your family's restored the movie theater, and now you've added more to that. And so if anything, I would present this resolution that reads, whereas the Chesterfield County Council has traditionally recognized individuals in our community that bring honor and attention to Chesterfield County. And whereas Robert Mac Nicholson of Passant, Carolina, being a resident of Chesterfield County, and whereas Robert Mac Nicholson was born on November seventh, nineteen forty-six, and whereas Robert Mac Nicholson married his wife, Mary Ann Nicholson, on February fourth, nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas Robert Mac Nicholson has been a longtime table of business man, community organizer, and historian. And whereas Robert Mac Nicholson retired on September third, twenty twenty-two, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Chesterfield County Council by this resolution hereby recognizing and honoring Robert Mac Nicholson for his special service to his profession, his community, and his family, and congratulates him on his retirement. And be it further resolved that Chesterfield County Council hereby adopts this resolution of appreciation in his honor the second day of November, twenty twenty-two. You don't have anything to say about your dad?
Um, he said to extend his gratitude, his thanks. Um, he was deeply honored. I spoke with him last night. He wanted to be here, but yesterday he had a shortness of breath and some other things, and he wasn't doing well at all. So he asked me if I would fill in for him this morning. His son Rodney, thank you, and God bless him. He says, thank you for the love and the sorrow.
Okay, we'll move down to item eleven A, Planning and Zoning Committee. Mr. Rivers, you going to talk to us about that a little bit?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, uh, uh, several, several days ago. We had one issue that we discussed, and that was the possibility of recommending some changes far as the lot size, various building properties. And it was felt that it was in the best interest of all of Chesterfield County to leave the plan as it is. Ms. Lavon Poe helped us initially with that for many years, and we feel like that it has worked well and it continues to work well. And we don't think that there's a need to reduce the lot width in our zoning regulations. So the committee has recommended that we not make any changes or recommend to the planning commission not to make any changes to the plan that we currently have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rivers. So no changes, no action, right, Ms. Ruffner?
Correct.
We do have an issue with regard to issuance of building permits to local governmental entities. But I believe the committee voted to recommend the county.
That's correct. I was going to address that. Thank you, Mr. Ruffner. The committee discussed, uh, our need to consider to you as council to ask that, uh, we ask our municipalities to pay a fee when, uh, they come before our Building and Zoning Committee for permits, to charge them a fee, just like we do, uh, other individuals. So it is our recommendation from the committee that we include that fee to be passed on to the municipalities, which that will not come up very often, but occasionally it does. And in the past, we have been waiving those permit fees. As you know, times are pretty tough and the county needs all the funds that they can possibly get as well. So we're recommending to council that, uh, we pass those fees along to our municipalities.
Mr. Ritter, I'm assuming that's a motion to do that?
Yes, that's coming from the committee. That's a motion.
I have a second. Mr. Ruffner, could you give us a little clarity on that, please?
Uh, yes, sir. It's, it's been a custom and practice of the county not to charge, uh, local governmental entities such as a municipality for the issuance of building permits. Uh, doesn't come up very often, uh, but the committee felt that, uh, it was, it was time to change that custom and practice to, to begin charging municipalities or other government, local governmental entities for those permits as they would any other entity.
Thank you. Got all the questions you had? We only have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Compton. Now we have a discussion. Anybody else want to talk about it?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir, Ms. Burns.
These building fees for the municipalities, is this something that they are passing on? If we're charging building permit fees to the general public and we're not charging a fee for the municipalities, are the municipalities in essence charging a fee to their, um, citizens?
I think they do have to have a business license. Ms. Ritter might want to comment on that.
Yes, they are required to, uh, to meet all the regulations that the municipalities have. But what we have been doing in the past, like Towne, Churro, Towne, Chesterfield, Pasan, if an entity come in and wanted to add, just in Pasan, for example, they just added a lift station. And, uh, that lift station was, uh, some fifty thousand dollars, that lift station. A fee was not charged for that building permit. The contractor normally pays that fee. But in, in the past, the towns have been foregoing charging those municipalities that fee. And we felt that as a business, they, they expect to pay that fee for that permit. And we felt the, the county should receive that fee even though it's indirectly coming from the contractor. It's the town's responsibility to, uh, to pass that fee along to the county. So that's, that's what we're recommending for us to start collecting those fees.
Thank you.
And Ms. Burns, the way I understand it, it's just for anything that a municipality, any town are building, a mayor's office or anything that the town is building themselves. Correct, Mr. Rivers?
Correct.
This has nothing to do with the general public in the town.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Okay, we'll move down to item eleven B, Finance Committee. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the finance committee met and we would like to present a proposal to council for a one-time net salary supplement of seventy-five dollars to our county employees. And additional, and additionally, that we observe Juneteenth holiday beginning twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Assuming that's to be in the form of a motion.
Yes, sir.
Seventy-five dollars and that's for Christmas. Is that correct? And add the Juneteenth holiday to the.
Juneteenth, yes.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Burns. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. So moved. Okay, Economic Development Committee, Ms. Anderson.
Um, yes, sir. So the Economic Development Committee has also met since our last meeting. And, um, as we've discussed before, it was, um, recommended by the Department of Commerce that we dissolve the board as it was, our Economic Development Board as it was, but, um, come up with a restructure, you know, the way that we do things so that we can, um, include more folks and make sure that we are, are getting, are having involvement from existing industries, utilities, the towns, education. Um, so what we've decided to do is to have quarterly meetings beginning January the seventeenth and have essentially like a round robin panel each time. And, um, certainly include, um, you know, folks from each of these entities. Ms. Lear will come up with, um, our panel each time. And she is also sending out a letter to our former board members thanking them for their service and encouraging them to continue to support economic development. And if they want to come to these, then, you know, we certainly would welcome anyone to be a part of these meetings. And it will really include information sharing and, um, idea sharing and just be an opportunity for us to hear from various folks quarterly. And so that is where we are with the Economic Development, um, Board dissolution and where we're going with their, that. And the other thing that is, um, important that we bring before you is we've been made aware that there's a level of urgency, um, to hire a project manager for existing industry. Terry and, um, Libby have told us how much work they've, they've been given or charged with for these RFIs, requests for information for projects, and they are just really swamped right now at a level that we, we should be concerned. I mean, it's a great thing that we have this, these RFIs, but the, the other part of that is that, um, there's just a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. So in, in addition to that, in less than six months, we're going to also be losing our administrative assistant who is highly skilled and has been a huge part of those RFIs. So we need to, um, look at hiring a project manager, existing industry person, and then essentially needing to replace, um, our administrative assistant. So whatever action you wish for us to take on that, we're happy to do, but we just wanted the board, all of us to be aware.
I don't think we need to take any action.
You can point it back to the, that committee. Point it back to that committee to do.
Okay, if that suits council.
Sure.
If the committee will take charge of that and go.
Okay.
Okay, any more, any questions? Okay, we'll move to item twelve A, Fire Department Rescue Squad. Ms. Anderson.
So as an added layer or level of transparency, our independent auditor has recommended that
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Curtis, second by Compton. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. We'll move down to item B, Ms. Stanley.
Yes, sir. Um, the Sheriff's Department has submitted one truck that they would like to surplus because it's, it's old and it's not operable. And they would actually like to take those, the funds from the sale of that truck to upfit, um, that we got three SRO vehicles coming in on a grant and the grant only covers the vehicle, so they would like to use these funds to upfit those. And then also they have more computers and I think they actually have one printer, but these computers, they, they tear them down and use as much as they can on other computers to, you know, so we won't have as much cost for the county. They, and, um, so they're like to surplus those also.
Okay, the only difference here is this property, the sheriff requests the money from this.
Yes, he's requesting it to put.
For a specific thing.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's going to be a small amount of money.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's money that we won't have to come out of general fund, you know? They, they've, basically they've come up with the money to get these vehicles on this grant outfitted because they don't, they don't use this truck.
With that being said, Ms. Curtis, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Curtis, second by Burns. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item thirteen C, five hundred ninety-six thousand general obligation bonds. Ms. Stanley.
Yes, sir. The request for proposals were sent out to, um, over ten local banks by our bond attorneys for the geo-bond payment, and we only received two proposals, one for first citizens at the interest rate of four point twenty-seven and Truist with the interest rate of three point seven five. So upon advice of our bond attorneys, um, we would like to recommend for council to, to award the proposal to Truist.
Which is the lowest, three point seven five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Butler, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we'll move down to item B, Land Use and Planning Commission. Ms. Anderson.
Yes, sir. I'd like to nominate Mr. Ronald Beck to be my representative.
Ronald Beck, I'm assuming that's a motion?
Yes, sir.
Have a second. Second by Miller. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item thirteen C, five hundred ninety-six thousand general obligation bonds. Ms. Stanley.
Yes, sir. The request for proposals were sent out to, um, over ten local banks by our bond attorneys for the geo-bond payment, and we only received two proposals, one for first citizens at the interest rate of four point twenty-seven and Truist with the interest rate of three point seven five. So upon advice of our bond attorneys, um, we would like to recommend for council to, to award the proposal to Truist.
Which is the lowest, three point seven five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Butler, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we'll move down to item sixteen A, Zoning Pills Board. Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Rivers, you have somebody to appoint.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to appoint Mr. Tim Griffin to serve in this capacity for Chesterfield County.
Okay, I'm assuming that's a motion?
Yes.
Have a second. Second by Miller. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. We'll move down to item B, Land Use and Planning Commission. Ms. Anderson.
Yes, sir. I'd like to nominate Mr. Ronald Beck to be my representative.
Ronald Beck, I'm assuming that's a motion?
Yes, sir.
Have a second. Second by Butler. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Move down to item sixteen C, Land Use and Planning Commission. Mr. Compton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to rec, uh, recommend Richard Zunt in my district to get on this board.
Richard Zunt.
Zunt.
Okay, I'm assuming that's a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second to the motion? Do I have a second to the motion again? Mr. Compton has made the motion, I need a second. Don't have a second, Mr. Compton, motion dies for lack of second.
Okay.
Okay, do you have anyone else you would like to?
I don't know anybody.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we could do that at a later date, couldn't we, Mr. Eubanks, to give you time to think? Okay, thank you. Uh, move down to item seventeen, Administrative Report. Mr. Eubanks.
I don't have anything.
Not one thing?
Not one thing. Not one thing.
Just say everything's going good.
Everything's going good.
All right. That's how it is.
Christmas bonus Maggie takes away.
All right. Any council member's got anything? Mr. Rivers.
Question, how we coming along for our roof repairs?
They are.
My understanding, they've put it out on RFPs and SBMB and those now, so we're waiting on that to come in. As soon as they do, we'll call a committee meeting.
Hope it don't rain.
I know. That's the truth.
River, we made it to mine. Anyone else? Curtis, you don't have nothing to say?
No, sir. I haven't.
Right, make a note of that. We made it through one time. Okay, so nobody has anything else? We have no executive session. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.[1740.12]